So I'll tell somebody to get to my house. Turn on Rosemary.
What happened?
Make one turn and drive into.
Monday, January fourteenth, twenty nineteen, regular session of Animal City Council, City Hall Council. One point oh roll call.
Rich.
Here.
Kay.
Here.
John.
Here.
Rod.
Here.
Cody.
Here.
Betty.
Here.
Two point oh pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point oh motion to approve the minutes from the following meeting, December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Cody. Any corrections or additions? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, carried. Four point oh public hearing, four point one public hearing on proposal to amend chapter one sixty-five of the city code regarding driveways and off-street parking. And I'll open the public hearing. Have you heard any comments or?
No. Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
First by. Rod. Second by Cody. Close the public hearing, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Five point oh presentation is none, six point oh proclamation is none. Council action items, seven point oh community betterment. Seven point one discussion and possible action on first reading of ordinance. Amending chapter one sixty-five of the city code to amend the regulations regarding driveways and off-street parking.
Move to approve.
Second.
I'd just like to clarify on that.
Who was the second amendment?
John.
John was.
Just like to clarify that the ordinance I think you guys are referring to uh was amended slightly after the planning and zoning uh board to include uh brick and stone pavers in the allowable uh driveway and off-street parking pavements, is that correct?
Yeah.
And it is, so if I understand it right, they can use brick or pavers. They can have grandfathered in gravel from the sidewalk to the house, but not the sidewalk to the street.
Correct.
And they cannot cut out portion of their yard in gravel to make a parking spot to park cars.
No new addition of gravel.
Okay. I just want a clarification.
Any further discussion or such?
The the approach area is to the inner inside of the easement or the house property side of the easement.
Wouldn't be to the property line.
Between the property line and the edge of the street.
Yeah.
Has to be hard surfaced.
Which will include the sidewalk area.
Right, the side, the side, the backside or the sidewalk closest to the house is part of the city's. And then from that point on, it is your property. Because not everybody has a sidewalk, but they still have a setback.
Yes, the easement line. The uh current gravel areas can remain that way indefinitely?
Yes.
Just cannot be expanded upon.
Yes.
More rock can be placed.
Yep, as long as the area isn't increased.
But they can't place more rock from the sidewalk to the street.
Right.
If it's rock right now, they can only rock from the sidewalk to their house, but they'll have to do something else between the sidewalk and the street.
And the pavers are only permitted from the garage to property line, they're not permitted from property line to the street.
Yes.
We all clear on that? This is a roll vote.
Kay.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Seven point two discussion of possible action on the committee appointments for twenty nineteen is recommended by Mayor Dale Barnes.
To move? Say again?
First by Cody, second by Rod. Everybody happy with what? You not?
Happy?
Sorry.
Are we okay with it?
Yeah.
It's fine.
Well, I could add some more. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Seven point three discussion of possible action on resolution approving and setting the regular animals of city council meetings for calendar year twenty nineteen.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Buddy, second by Rich. Anybody want anything changed? And it to us a roll vote.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
Seven point four discussion of possible action on resolution, changing the name for the section of Hamilton Street that is south of Third Street to Rosemary Lane.
Move to approve.
First by Rich.
Second.
Second by John.
Um, so it's always been Hamilton Street, but people call it Rosemary Lane, is that, did I read that right?
To the best of my knowledge, it's always been platted as Hamilton despite the fact that the road sign and the addresses have been Rosemary Lane for, I don't know how long, but I assume for the distant past. Uh, so why, why uh the confusion, I'm, I'm not completely sure.
Well, I was gonna drive there and didn't have a chance this weekend, how many houses are there, like, do they have to change their address?
Well.
Well, there's five or six houses on that section of the street.
Going up that.
Going up the hill.
But only two, only two lots, if you look at it, state, Hamilton Street.
And those were just given.
Yeah, the rest of them all say Rosemary.
Oh, okay.
And the house that's there that says Hamilton, if you look at the mailing address, it says Third Street. So, go figure.
Goes.
Well, and that's what I wondered, I thought, well, how many houses are there, but if it's, yeah. Now I understand, it was kinda confusing reading it.
And the people that live there want it to be Rosemary Lane, not Hamilton Street, I would assume?
Well, I haven't spoken with them all, uh, I've only heard one, one person called when, when they saw the street sign change from Rosemary Lane to Hamilton. Um, and they, they want it to be Rosemary Lane, um, I haven't heard from any others, one way or the other.
Uh, I've talked to three and they all wondered why it changed.
To Hamilton.
To Hamilton. What, what we were fixing that was broken, and why we spent time and money to put a sign up. And all of them have Rosemary Lane as mailing.
Sure.
So, I'm assuming that they're going to want it Rosemary Lane as opposed to needing to change.
I would assume, but it never is even.
State, so state records would indicate it to be actually Hamilton.
The, the, the city flat maps show it as Hamilton.
The reason they came up was because of there was a lot on that Third Street side that was being split into two parcels, so we had to figure out the correct address. That's when it was brought to our attention that it was not identified in according to our city plots. So now we're just gonna go back.
You said mailing addresses per the post office indicate those homes as Rosemary Lane. Someone's deed an abstract?
If you look at the assessor's website, they all say Rosemary Lane.
Which means everyone's individual DOT licensing would say Rosemary Lane.
Well, Dave, does your license say Rosemary Lane?
I'm not sure what you're referring to as, as far as license, but.
Your driver's license.
Yes, Rosemary Lane, mailing address is Rosemary Lane, all the utilities are Rosemary Lane, except the address on the corner, which is a fictitious address in my opinion, it's showing twelve oh one East Third, and that house is vacant right now up for sale. And of course, the lot in front of it, between the house and Third Street is for sale also. Uh, and they're both showing on the, on the beacon dot com, that's four ninety-seven and four ninety-nine Hamilton. But everything else up that street is Rosemary Lane.
Except, except for the mailing address for that house is twelve oh one East Third Street.
But, uh, well, and the reason that is because.
Where's the frontage?
That was the lot that was subdivided, and so the addresses, it used to front Third Street.
Yeah, would've been the front.
Now that it's subdivided, they're both facing, I mean, one's still, the undeveloped one is still facing Third, but.
Right, but it's, the way that house is situated, there's no front door, there's no door towards Third Street.
Right.
So therefore, it really shouldn't have been Third Street, but.
Right.
And the thing, Rod, about, um, the good thing about taking deeds and abstracting is they go by legal description, they don't go by an address. So it's not totally gonna affect any of that at all.
So, if I'm hearing correctly, to, in a sense, leave as is with Rosemary Lane would favor the residents, property owners.
There are fifteen residences on Rosemary Lane, which is basically U-shaped.
U-shaped, yes.
It's the only residence that's in question is, was now the Reckemeier residence, they have moved, it's up for sale. And the lot in front of it, between the house and Third Street, those both carry Hamilton Street addresses according to beacon dot com. But if you type in four ninety-nine Hamilton Street on Google, it shows up in the middle of the intersection of Second Street and Hamilton Street by Strawberry School. Which, can I speak, do you want me to stand over?
Yeah, go up to the podium.
I wasn't planning on speaking, I just wanted to listen to which direction this all was going. Dave Place, mailing address five oh two Rosemary Lane, Hamilton Street signage. I spoke to Jacob on December nineteenth about this observation, and my main concern is, when they change it to Hamilton, when it comes to emergency services, the ambulance service is comprised of at least ninety-five percent of elder towners staffing that, those units right now. So the first thing they do when they get in the rig, if they're not familiar with the location in town with a common street name like Main Street or something, they punch in their numbers for their map system. If it's one to five, five oh two Rosemary Lane, and they're coming down Third Street and Google's telling them to take a left, but they've got Hamilton Street signage, both on the south side and north side of Third Street, there's no Rosemary Lane signage. So they're gonna go down another block thinking, okay, Google Map is wrong. They're gonna get down to Oak Street, then what are they gonna do? If they got some common sense, it might turn around and come back towards where Google Map originally directed them, which could cause a delay in somebody getting medical attention. I do recall several years ago, when the Reckemeiers needed an ambulance, and I was not on the service any longer, I saw the ambulance going up and down Main Street, or Third Street, looking for twelve oh one East Third Street. Because again, there was no driveway coming off of Third Street, they had to come up Rosemary Lane to, to get access to the residence. So, I'm hoping the action tonight of the council is that they simplify everything and rename it Rosemary Lane on the signage, that will correct a lot of problems. But the real problem is, Google Map is going to be still showing that residence that's vacant right now as twelve oh one East Third. So, who notifies Google Map with something like that? Because we have local responders for emergency, law enforcement, fire department, you know. Are, are, is this residence gonna be renamed four ninety-nine Rosemary Lane now? And four ninety-seven Rosemary Lane for the vacant lot, is that what the intention is?
Well, if somebody were to build a house on that vacant lot, and they come down Rosemary Lane and come in the driveway, and it's on the side of the house, but the front of the house faces Third Street, that could be the correct address.
Rosemary Lane?
No, Third Street.
Yes, the present house, which has full view of Third Street, has no front door, and has no driveway coming off of Third Street.
Right, but the, but to, the vacant lot is in front of that house, in front of Third Street, right, between that house and Third Street?
That is correct.
What I'm saying is if the house that's built there is facing Third Street, okay?
With the front door?
With the front door and the frontage of the home, Third Street, it would have a Third Street address.
That's correct. So what are you gonna do with four ninety-nine Hamilton Street as it is in uh beacon dot com?
That would probably be Rosemary, wouldn't it?
I don't know that we have the authority to change an address.
We, we typically assign them when, when they're.
We do or the post office does?
We do.
We do?
We do.
And then there's a notification process, because you have utilities that have to be filled from a certain address, you have postal service effective.
It's communication with the property owner in the county so they can update Beacon, you know, so it's a combination.
So that house will lose the address it has, and that'll stay with.
That'll be switched back to Rosemary or Third, depending on how we look at it, but, uh.
So that new lot will get up.
There's probably a Third Street address.
It could go either way.
Could, depends on how you front it.
It doesn't really don't know, because it's just a vacant lot, but.
Depends on how somebody puts a house on it.
Correct.
So we just need to rename the.
The other ones.
The other ones.
The Third Street house to a Rosemary.
Right.
And cities, that's the best time to do it. Like you said nowadays, that'd be a good time to do it for it to do on.
Ideal time, but again, you still have, if you do that, and if you have the power to do that, who's notifying Google Maps or whatever map application law enforcement uses? Chief, what?
Well.
What uh map system do you have in your squad vehicles?
They uh, it runs through Google or whatever, there's other options, but generally runs through Google.
And I think there's a notification system in place for that, if you see a mistake on Google Map, you're supposed to notify them. So does the City of Animal City, will they be, you know, reporting that?
We've never reported that, we can try to do so.
My, my thoughts are, is if we're gonna dip into these, all kinds of newer technology that we didn't deal with twenty, thirty years ago.
But Dave, didn't you, did you say earlier when you Google mapped it, it put it at the corner of Second Street?
Four ninety-nine Hamilton shows up in the middle of Second Street.
Right, so it's, it's showing up in the wrong spot now, anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
That's true.
Yeah.
But we would like to have our Rosemary Lane signage back up down on Third Street.
Yeah, 'cause I know it says Rosemary Lane in front of the care center to go down and loop around.
And that section is correctly Rosemary Lane, the only part, it's a pretty ninety-degree corner there on the section we're talking about, and true Rosemary Lane. Um, this would just officially make that a part of that loop, whereas.
Right.
Before it was platted centrally.
So, and how soon can we get the signage changed?
I, I assume they kept the sign that they took down, and if that's the case, they could probably change it tomorrow, but.
Okay.
If they have to order a new sign, then, I don't know, a week or so.
So, to answer your question about updating it, on Google Maps, there's a, there's a tab for editing. Hit send, yes, anybody can do it. On your smartphone.
All right, thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Ready to vote on this one?
Sure.
All right, it's a roll vote.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Seven point five discussion of possible action on reappointment of Bernie Rollins to the PNC Board and the.
Parking Rec.
Parking.
Parking Rec Board and new appointment of Julian Hints to the Parking Rec Board.
So moved.
Second.
Give it to Kay.
First, first by Rich, second by Kay. All those in. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Eight point oh public safety, eight point one motion to approve the renewal of beer and liquor licenses. A, renewal of Class E liquor license, Class B wine permit, Class C beer permit with Sunday sale privileges, Giggle Juice Liquor Station.
You can do them both in one if you want, unless you're.
And B renewal of Class C beer permit with Sunday sale privileges, Tapkins Convenience Club.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Cody. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, carried. Eight point two discussion of possible action approving the renewal of the waste collection licenses for the following haulers. BFI Waste Services LLC, DBA Republic Services, Edward Sanitation, Fraser Sanitation, Lyndon, Lyndon Incorporated, DBA Oxy Waste, VIP Sanitation and Waste Management.
So moved.
Second.
First by John, second by Cody. Any discussion?
Well, I understand the agenda item is to approve the uh listed uh businesses to collect sanitation. I really think at some point, we need to give consideration to restructuring this. There's quite a few trucks beating up and down our roads, basic, and can be following one another on any given day. That is wear and tear.
When Pat Callahan was here, he had suggested doing something where the city was more involved in garbage collection.
Yeah, I understand the, the agenda item as it is, I just think that we should give some consideration to changing the structure that the city has for this service.
Do all of these do residential or do some just do commercial?
I'm, I'm not aware, uh, most of them I think do residential, uh, there's only a couple that I'm not familiar with, but.
Most, all of them do residential, there's a couple that do commercial specifically, that can take the dumpsters. I think there's only like three, two or three that actually work with the dumpsters.
BFI does a lot of dumpsters.
I will say that in the past, when this has been discussed, the response from the public is they like the option of being able to have choices and more competitive pricing. That's why they like having that choice, because some are a lot more expensive than others.
And I get that, I'm always on the fence about this, 'cause to weigh the pros and cons, that's a huge factor, and you wanna support all businesses. But for the overall best interest of the city, if you're paying for your trash pickup with your water bill, there's less nuisance properties. They're not piling garbage along the side of the garage all summer long to take one trip to the landfill. You know, you have um less heavy trucks going up and down under the intro streets, you have, like, I get the positive and negative of both sides.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Nine point oh public works done, ten point oh finance, ten point one discussion of possible action approving annual financial report for the City of Animal City for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, is prepared by Clinton Losinell and L L P.
Motion to approve.
First by Rod.
Second.
Second by Kay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Ten point two discussion of possible action on resolution hiring and setting a salary of part-time Lawrence Community Center employee for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
So moved.
First by Kay.
Second.
Second by John. Any discussion? If not, it's a roll vote.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Eleven point oh city administrators report.
Not much report, uh, we are, there has been progress at the water plant, um, still difficult to say exactly when we'll reach substantial completion. We're well over three months past what it should've been, um, I'd like to think within two to three weeks we'll be there. Uh, still working with the engineers and uh the insurance company to hold Clachi accountable. Uh, but at this point, we're just trying to get the project up.
Wha- what are the shortcomings or gaps in the project at this time?
Um, they're still finishing up the controls on the filters, so those aren't all programmed yet. Everything, as far as I'm aware, is installed, but it's not operational yet, um, then there's a lot of touch-up work, um, uh, but, but we're, we're, we should be close to operational.
So if we get the, the computer or the electronic work finalized, uh.
That's the, that's the major.
Can we do a, you know, in a sense, a initial test run? And then finish up some of these other minor issues later?
Well, I mean, filters are up and running, they're both, both sets of filters up and running, it's just, we haven't met all requirements for substantial completion. Um, just, just like things that aren't affecting necessarily the operation of filters would be, like, the door locks aren't complete. So, um, they, they can be locked, but they're not set up as they should be, so, um, that's, that's a requirement for it to be uh substantially complete. Whereas there's still some punctual assignments that would have to be finished if that.
More of an all or none for approval to launch.
Yeah. That's it.
That's it? Okay, twelve point O, mayor and council reports on boards and commissions.
Dale and I went to landfill meeting. They're, uh, they got an old farmstead there. They're gonna plug the well, fill the cistern, cut all the trees down, try and clean up that area. And then emergency management, they sold their two thousand eleven pickup for fourteen thousand. They got a new Tahoe with a towing package and bigger tires with state bid for only ten thousand more. So that twenty-four thousand for the new Tahoe, that's a pretty good deal. That was the big thing there that Brenda said. Then the only thing, E nine one one, Dubuque's trying to get some relays on this tower out at Amber. It's almost gonna overload it so they can hook on farther west into Lynn County, but they don't know about that yet, 'cause they don't have a lot of room out there by the trailer place. And could run into trouble for Jones County if they need something farther down the road, so they're still looking into that.
Anybody else? Thirteen point O, public with business with accounts on items, not on the agenda.
I got a question. Dale and David, one oh two part place. I'm trying to comply with the UTV ordinance, and I want to come down here to get the license. They sent me this, the police station, so where do I go? They said to come back down here. Uh, it says on the paper that they gave me that I come to see Paul.
Okay, well, we'll get it sorted out and, uh.
I want to fly, I mean.
Yeah.
Once it's going to the.
It, it, it's in effect, um, the, if we got anything yet, which we're, we're.
At this point in time, I think we'll just issue a receipt. It'll be entitled, or we'll have something written on their UTV ordinance. Um, we're working right now through our software company to actually print out some sort of a, uh, more professional and.
I, I understand it takes a little time to that.
But, but yeah.
Who do I go to? That's what I'm asking.
Go, go to the police station.
Okay, yeah, follow me up, thank you.
Thanks, Dale. Anybody else? Fourteen point O, adjournment.
Motion approved.
Second. Is that rich and buddy?
All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carrie?